I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting and duly posted meeting of part of the City Commission to order, and please join me in invocation. Apparently, Father of the State, June 19th, a day in which all Texans recognize the emancipation of African-Americans from slavery. We pray for the diversity of races and cultures. Oh God, who created all pupils, in your image we thank you for the wonderful diversity of races and cultures in this world. Enrich our lives by ever widening circles of fellowship and show us your presence in those who differ most from us until our knowledge of your love is made perfect in our love for all your children through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge is that the United States of America and into the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of you here to our meeting. Glad to have you here, especially if you're a visitor, welcome into our meetings and hope you participate. Item one is the public announcement of events.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody here. Yes, well, this is my first announcing here in the city. I'm very, I'm glad to be part of the city here and make all this announcing. Well, you can see we have this, the first is the day, the park hosted by the United Way of Northern Cameron County in the Long Hill Park. It's a Saturday, June 27. The next is a Saturday, June 29. It's an adult table tennis tournament at the Harlingen Community Center. Then we have the Thursday, July 4, and Friday, July 6 in the City Harlingen Freedom Festival and Long Hill Park. Also, I want to tell you, let you know that this is the poster that we are posting everywhere, and also it's going to be on the screens in the Far Bridge and the Tomares Veterans Bridge without costs for us. So, we will have this advertising. So, and then we have the Funny Girls World Series that we have every year here on Thursday, July 99, in the Wilson Sport Complex Park. And Saturday, July 20, is the Movies at the Park in the corner of A and Jackson Street downtown here in Harlingen, and the movie will be The Ring the Bell. So these are the next events, community events. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item two is the proclamation, proclaiming the months of June and July 2013 as firefighter MDA months, and I'd like to call foreword Jennifer Molina, the area director for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and then if I ask you to hand it over, firefighters that are going to participate here and work with us.
Just want to say a few words. Of course, I'm Jennifer Molina, and thank you to the City of Harlingen for having us here today, and a special thank you to the City Commissioners and Mayor Boswell. The Muscular Dystrophy Association, the firefighters have a longstanding tradition, and this is actually our 60th year partnering together. We actually have more than 280,000 members in the United States and Canada of firefighters who actually pledge to save lives both as firefighters and paramedics, and they are the strongest campaigners for the worldwide research efforts of MDA to eradicate over 42 neuromuscular diseases. The contributions of the firefighters also go towards MDA Summer Camp for Children, professional and public health education, and other programs. In 2012, the Harlingen firefighters collected an amazing 28,000 due to their gracious generosity of the City of Harlingen residents and others. We look forward to another successful year and continue to fight against neuromuscular disease. And on behalf of the Harlingen firefighters and the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association, we'd like to thank you for our longest opportunity and once again contribute to the object of the eradication of neuromuscular disease. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to go over to the floor, please present the proclamation group to you all, and just stand over here in place of Harlingen so you can get a picture of you. All right, we're going to present the proclamation now. Muscular dystrophy refers to a group of more than 40 neuromuscular diseases that caused generalized weakness and muscle wasting. Two of the most common neuromuscular diseases include Duchenne's Muscular Dystrophy Disease found in children that progresses slowly, with survival rare beyond their late twenties, and amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, Lou Gehrig's disease, a disorder that progresses rapidly in adult clients. The Muscular Dystrophy Association is a dedicated partnership of scientists and citizens aimed at conquering neuromuscular diseases. MDA is one of the world's leading national health agencies supporting research, patient care and education, and whereas members of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters serve and protect communities throughout Harlingen every day, and whereas members of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters have become a symbol of pride, honor, and strength, and whereas members of the Harlingen Professional Firefighters unselfishly donate their time and energy to supporting the battle against muscular dystrophy, and whereas firefighters across the nation are some of the largest supporters in the United States of MDA, now therefore I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the months of June and July 2013 as firefighter MDA month in the City of Harlingen, and hereby urge all citizens to recognize firefighters for their support of local community. And we really take them out of pride in having our firefighters, fire department participate and as a symbol of your service to our community in addition to everything that you do in our daily business, and what a great cause that you're helping. So, thank you for participating in this. Thank you. Go ahead and sit with this. And the next item on the agenda is the Net Rid Clean Sweep conducted on June 8, 2013, West Beck Street to West Matt Street, First Street to Red Lob Street, City of Manchester. Make that first station.
Mayor, just a quick overview of what was picked up during the Clean Sweep. We had 2.1 tons of debris and approximately 74 tires that were picked up, and I'll just show you some good pictures of what they took. You see some of the volunteers cleaning up, some of the stuff that was carried away from the area. You look at the tires, a bunch of tires that were picked up, debris that were picked up from various locations. So, all around, there was a great effort. The next Clean Sweep is coming in July the 6th, and it's going to be in District 2, Commissioner Ullman's, and it'll be in the area of East Van Buren to East Jefferson from 77 to 21st Street. So, if there's anybody out there that wants to go out and help us, please contact our code enforcement department.
Carlos?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you an opportunity. You want to toot the horn with what we're doing with those tires?
Yes, sir. We have, as some of you may have noticed in the paper, that we, the city has just signed an agreement to work with a tire recycling plant here in Harlingen, and we are recycling the tires. It's a, that effort really has led to a reducing cost for our city, our citizens, and it's also helping our environment because it's, we're recycling the materials. So it's a great venture, and we hope to keep doing that for a very long time.
We want to recognize anybody who's here for help, volunteer with that clean sweep last Saturday. Anybody here from the Tamayo Home Boys, the Tamayo Home Boys, how about the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department?
I volunteered Tamayo.
Come on, come on out. Okay, well, great. We have a whole stack of, yeah, of certificates we'd like you to present to everybody who participated. We've got all these names, and if we miss somebody, please come back and get another one. And thank you so much for helping with this. This is an important thing we do, we're trying to help keep our city clean, and we can't do it without volunteers like you and the folks who came out from your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
That happens all the time. But you make probation departments, you're three. Now, that was, you may have gotten this. I'm going to give you a thank you. Not in that stack, but sure, and we want to recognize the men and women who went down.
Thank you very much.
I handed him the other stack. Item four is the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of May 1st, 2013, and a special meeting of May 16th, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yeah, I have a correction. The name is listed as Martin De La Paz, Commissioner Magu, M-A-R-U.
And that's on the page of May 1st?
Page seven of the May 1st.
Any other additions or corrections? With that addition and correction, is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approved the minutes of May the 1st, 2013, and May the 16th, 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose motion carries minutes are approved. Items 5A and 5B consent agendas, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda on final reading?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. Item six, consider take action to approve resolution of the board of directors of Harlingen Water Works to increase general manager salary to $150,000 per year to effective on the date of approval of the resolution by the City Commission. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Make a motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. All right. So, thank you. We have members of, distinguished members of the Harlingen Utility Board here with us today, and we thank you all for being here to support that resolution, and just by sitting there, you influence the commission quite a bit. But thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for the work that you do for our, for our city, for all of the citizens who, who receive services from the Harlingen Water Works and Public Utilities, and it's a, it's an important, a very important job that you do, affects our lives every single day, and we appreciate the work that you do and the fine work that your staff and your general manager put up. Stand up to be recognized.
Can we recognize Chris Barry Al? He's the outgoing. I know you all don't get recognized here, but I wanted to at least acknowledge your service that you gave our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item seven, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential single-family R1 District to residential multifamily M2 District 4, 11.199, plus or minus acres out of Block 143, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision located between Matt's Avenue and North 77 Sunshine Strip west of G Street. Applicant Brownlee Allen Associates care of Emilio Garza, A.M.G.R.
Attorney General. Attorney General, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from residential single-family to residential multifamily district to allow for multifamily lots. This will basically be a continuation of existing multifamily lots that you have on the west side of the G Street. This is a subject subdivision which actually approved, the perimeter plan was approved back in 2002 as a phase development. Phase one was developed in 2003. They're developed currently as duplex lots. The developer's intention is to develop the northern perimeter of this subdivision with a similar type of development. This is the south side of Matt's Avenue, just north of Business 77. Again, this would be a phase development. Subject property is currently vacant, and surrounding land use, you have the existing duplex lots which are on the west side of G Street. You also have a mixture of apartments on the east side of G Street, and then you have some apartments further to the west. The request is consistent with the request of rezoning as far as the land use, future land use map, these are the existing quotas in the area, as you see, it's currently vacant, and these are the existing duplexes on G Street, this is Business 77. Future land use shows this area as high density residential, so the request is consistent with the future land use map. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There is no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the request. Take any questions, leave the applicant to request any further questions.
Will these also be duplexes or other designs?
They, I believe, intend this to be duplex lots, although they could be used for duplexes or fourplexes, but neither are for duplex lots.
Don't we have a different zoning designation if it's just going to be duplexes?
We do, correct.
So it's kind of a mixed use, there'll be duplexes and single-family homes?
Correct, it could be, in the current, any questions, okay.
Item A is a public hearing. Public hearing, does anyone like to speak for or against the ordinance to rezone? Hearing now, a closing of the hearing, and ask Mr. Ozon to read the caption.
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen, rezoning 11.199 plus or minus acres out of Block 143, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision located between Matt's Avenue and North 77 Sunshine Strip west of G Street, from residential single-family R1 District to residential multifamily M2 District, providing for publication and abating other matters relating to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, motion carries. Item A, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business, smoke shop in the general retail GR district located at 1046 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of block 15, block 4, Crown Heights subdivision, applicant Ricardo Rodriguez.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow adult business, which would be a smoke shop of 140 square feet in what's known as La Encantada Plaza or Strip Center, located on the north side of 77 Sunshine Strip. There's existing six suites, I believe all the two of them are occupied. This is a proposed suite the applicant would be occupying. This is the existing suite of La Encantada Strip Center. You can see there's other businesses, I think there's a barber shop, there's an insurance business, and art gatherings property. The surrounding use is developed to the north, it would be residential use. On the front edge, you have a commercial use, office use. Notify the property owners within 200 foot radius. Public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. Generally, the hours of operation for this establishment will be from Monday through Saturday, be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The departments of building inspections, fire, health, and the police department reviewed the request. Neither of the subject departments had any objection to the specific use permit. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant complying with the code of ordnance regarding unlawful substances, providing parking, and as well as providing surveillance video, maintaining a 30-day retention of the video, and compliance with the requirements of the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is pressing for questions.
Yeah, is this the, this is an existing business, right? And it's on F Street? Is this the one on F Street?
Correct.
And they're just moving?
Correct.
And have there been any difficulties with the existing business?
What do you do, the department, police department, they submit to staff? No, there's no problems here.
Okay. Go to item A, public hearing, who would like to speak for or against this SUP, specific use permit?
Jose Rodriguez Jr., 23rd and Nacienda Road. I am for the, for the SUP as planned, but I do want to point out that I welcome back Mrs. Dora Vela. I welcome her efforts to come back to the business world. She's been sick for quite a while, and any improvement in this area where something good for the city is going to be good for the community, and I hope that one day that we recognize Mrs. Dora Vela's efforts in bringing in business to Harlingen. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the SUP? Hearing now, a closing of public hearing, and go to item B, consider take action to approve, adopt an ordinance on first reading above mentioned specific use permit, make sure you read the caption.
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to allow Ricardo Rodriguez Jr. to allow adult business in the general retail GR district located at 1046 North 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 5, bearing legal description of block 15, block 4, Crown Heights subdivision, subject to, one, providing and maintaining the required parking in accordance with the city regulations; two, provide and maintain video surveillance with a 30-day retention of video; three, comply with code ordinance chapter 137.01 on multiple substances; and four, comply with the requirements administered by planning, zoning department, building inspection department, fire prevention department, and police department, providing for publication and abating other matters relating to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Your second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like sign, motion carries. Item nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow an open-air business garden nursery in a general retail district located at 313 West Van Buren, bearing a legal description of lots 5 through 6, block 67, Harlingen original town site, applicant Dora Vela.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an outdoor business, which would be a garden nursery, on a 25 by 150 square, 150-foot lot that's located on the south side of Van Buren Avenue. This is the subject property, it's currently vacant. The applicant currently owns a restaurant to the east of the subject property, so it would have a transaction for the garden nursery that would take place in the restaurant. The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Neither department's had any objections to the request. The hours of operation for this proposed business would be from Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the subject to the applicant complying with the requirements of appropriate city departments. Take any questions on that?
Any questions? Go to item A, public hearing. Okay, go ahead. I'll open the public hearing, but you can go ahead and ask your question.
I didn't have any questions. I was going yes. I'm happy we're using a piece of property account for this.
Anyone who'd like to speak for or against this?
Sorry.
Public hearing.
Just as I reflect, my comments were made on this.
Correct.
There really wasn't, all I saw was the retracing wish. Thank you.
I made the connection, that was very good.
We sort of figured, I think most of us kind of figured that out.
Yes.
And, anyway, anyone else like to speak for or against this SUP? I'll close the public hearing, go to item B, which is consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned specific use permit. Read the caption.
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27, of the City of Harlingen, to issue a specific use permit to Dora Vela to allow an open-air business garden nursery in a general retail GR district located at 313 West Van Buren, bearing legal description of lots 5, 6, block 67, Harlingen original town site, subject to compliance with the requirement administered by the planning, health, fire, and park prevention, and police department, providing for publication and abating other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to approve, and then adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
I would also echo the comments of Mr. Rubio and Commissioner Al, that this is a great addition to this part of our city, and it makes for a second business which is opened up, and a vacant building there across from Megamorphosis and down from another restaurant that's been there for a while, Rewary and Grill. It's great to see that, and welcome Ms. Vela back, and I've heard lots of great things about her restaurant, so I think it'll be a great addition to our city and that part of the city, that part of our community.
And I understand the PD is going to start revamping that substation there also, so I'm seeing really nice things there.
Yeah, I think that, that all that development around there's been great, so I congratulate her for coming back and opening that restaurant in that location. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 10, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated M District to residential single-family R1 District for 2.0 acres out of Block 23, Leland subdivision located at 15852 Drury Lane, applicant John T. Sullivan.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from not designated zoning district to residential single-family to allow for a single-family residence on the subject property. This is the subject property, it's located on the south side of Drury Lane. There's existing, known of the property, which the property owner plans on removing once the single-family residence is constructed. Since the surrounding area is developed mostly with single-family houses, so it's consistent with the land use. This is the subject property, and the old one should be removed. Future land use shows this area as low-density residential, so the request is consistent with the land use, future land use plan. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions on the item.
Is there any questions? I go to item A, which is the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, a closing of public hearing, go to item B, which is consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoned request. Ask Allen to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen, rezoning 2.0 acres out of Block 23, Leland subdivision located at 15852 Drury Lane, from not designated M District to residential single-family R1 District, providing for publication and abating other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider take action to authorize the mayor of the town, the City of Harlingen, to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice under the Department of Moral Justice Assistance Grant Program for fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $26,236. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Our item is just that, to request that this body authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to submit a grant application to the Department of Justice in amount, in amount just over $26,200. The award amount is basically set already, as are the categories which we can spend the money on. In short, we're going to just make some technological upgrade, create some computers, cameras, and about it.
Okay, so there are stipulations to this grant?
Yes, sir.
These grants are?
Are there any matching funds for the grant, or is it full?
Full years.
Fully funded.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize the grant application?
So moved. Second.
Is there a second? I'd like to, you know, point out that this is, this is one of many grants that the PD and other of our departments throughout the city work on, apply for, and are successful in obtaining to leverage our local tax dollars. We have really, we have specialists within each of our departments who know, know where these grants are, they know how to go after them, and they're very successful in doing so. And this is a relatively small grant, but it's, and all adds up, it really does.
Yes, sir.
Especially when you have them all. So, I would like to, you know, again congratulate the department for keeping up with these. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12, consider take action to approve the preliminary ranking of the insurance firms for professional consulting services for insurance to assist researching, developing, implementing, and employee self fully funded company insurance like ABD Employee Services Program, Vision Dental Insurance Cafeteria Plan and Products that authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the highest ranked firm.
Mayor?
Hi, Colonel.
I'd just like to announce that Commissioner Preston's team finally concluded with this one for ABD.
Mayor City Commission, we requested proposals for qualifications for consultant. We have six firms submit proposals. We had six firms submit proposals. They were ranked. We have the ranking, Company of McGriff, Seibles, and Williams was ranked the highest, and it's our recommendation that that company, the city manager be allowed to negotiate a contract with them for consulting services.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Is this new, something new that the city is doing, or have we done this?
We have done that, we have done that in the past.
And do we currently do it with, with some company?
We've actually used this company two renewals ago. Last time we had used another company that assisted us at that time, that one also submitted a proposal this time, but the one that was selected was the one that had previously used.
Okay, so this is behavior consistent with the city of using outside contracts?
It's industry-wide. You'll notice that most cities use consultants. Cities have to.
Typically, when, when they, when they come in with a renewal rate that's flat or, you know, within 5% or even 10%, the city staff recommend that we just stay, stick with it because that's within a, you know, tolerance. But when we're looking at a proposed 33% increase and we need to go out and redid it, we, we have always used a consultant.
And what is the cost per year?
Well, just, I think because the, the agenda allows us to negotiate the cost. We do, we do have a set amount that's budgeted, so we're hoping to stay with the budget dimension.
Who was the previous company?
The one we had used.
That was two years ago, correct?
Two years ago, we had used Valley Risk Consulting.
And prior to them, any, any one of these?
We had used McGriff, Seibles, and Williams.
Oh, so this.
This company has.
We approved this one, we've used them before, we have experience with this company.
We've used them several times.
We used them in 2011, right?
2000.
10.
10, I think it was.
Yeah, because 2011 would have been this Valley Risk.
And how long would this contract be for?
We're only looking at it for the implementation of the, going out for the proposals on the health insurance. We can negotiate it to continue longer, but what we really need it is to go from here all the way through October 1st when we actually have to have the new insurance in place.
Typically, what they do is they come in and they help us develop the request for proposals. And in this case, I think it's for a couple of reasons, it's even more significant that we go out and hire an expert. One is, is we're looking at significant increases in insurance costs. Two is that I think at some point, we staff had talked about maybe customizing a plan that maybe would incorporate a self-funded arm to that. So I think it's critical that we have an expert in the industry. And then third, there's a lot of conditions that have changed in the industry because of the Obamacare. So those three things, I think, make it significant enough for us to go out there and continue the tradition of having a good thought in the board.
Okay, so I guess the question then narrows down to, is this a one-time, three- or four-month event, or will they be on a retainer for a year?
My expectation is for this period, for this three, four-month period.
Yeah, they'll be, they need to work quickly because we certainly want to avoid what happened last time. We don't want to, we want to have this fully implemented before. We don't want to have any hiccup transitioning if we end up having to transition from one company.
And that's why we're hoping for a renewal, but because the rates were high, we had to follow this rate.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the ranking and to authorize the staff to negotiate a contract?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Let's get that, really get on that.
Yes, sir. We'll get on that tomorrow.
Okay, item 13, board appointments. Whether there are boards?
We have Commissioner Castillo.
Yes, Mayor. I have a reappointment of Aaron Sines to the Community Development Advisory Board, Sarah Aguilat to the Arms and Proud Advisory Board, Ida Vardaga Stillman to the Munis Auditorium Advisory Board, David Aguilat to the Parks Advisory Board, Hector Cruz to the Veterans Advisory Board, and Regina Ship, Veterans Advisory Board. All these are reappointments.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else?
I'm still looking for anybody that, that know that. I need somebody to help me in the border, construction border adjustment. It's very, very hard to find people they want to participate or put his time on.
I have to.
If anyone wants to help me.
Okay.
I have none.
All right. I have a motion to approve the board appointments.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And I'm going to skip to item 16, citizen communication.
You can skip it? I think he said skip it.
Skip to it.
Oh.
All right.
Mayor, I have Javio. Where is the partner? Your first question is.
I'll make this real quick. Jose Rubio, Lieutenant Anderson Road. Which one of you commissioners is going to condone the possible cover-up of an incident that occurred at HPD? How about you, Mr. Carlos Zarena? Another tradition of pursuing whistleblowers and sanctioning them with suspensions. Over 132 officers are scared of telling the truth right now on an incident that occurred a few weeks ago. Approximately three or four weeks ago, there was an incident that occurred in the rear parking lot where a police car assigned to Lieutenant Anderson showed up damaged, Unit Number 367. One of the assumed facts, no one reports that Unit 367 assigned to Lieutenant Anderson has damage to the left front quarter. An email memo is put out to HPD officers to have the culprit confess to several criminal violations, criminal violations, departmental policy violations, and city policy violations, especially the failure of the suspect to take a drug test. After a few days, it is revealed that our illustrious Assistant Police Chief, Mayor, has just suspected damage to vehicle. City Manager Carlos Zarena and Commissioner Chino Sanchez pay a visit to Tom Whitten, the police chief. He assures him that there was a police report. What about the drug test? Now another item concerning the investigation services. Chief Whitten was a potential passenger of Unit 367 during the accident. Chief Mayor struck a bail of hay with a police unit, 367, causing the damage. I have filed for an open records report, and the custodian tells me, Monica Puga, that there is no police report on file. We have lies, deception, and once again, I don't understand how this incident happened three or four weeks ago that was reported that has no police report. Don't kill the messengers, folks. It's already been done before when we attacked a couple of police officers for fighting the Nazis, and then for a city commissioner who filed a false report. Thank you.
All right, next.
My name is Yvonne Schaffet, 258 Adespanas. My Freedom Information Act that I am going to request, I requested the same thing he requested, and I was told that it was a lie, that it didn't happen, but I know it did happen, and you cannot hide the truth. The truth will, you know, the truth will set you free, and it hasn't set anybody free yet. What I'm going to talk about is this appointee, legal or illegal? I was at the airport meeting this past Monday, and there were four appointees, and one of them was Ricky Lee Yan. Everybody knows that Ricky Lee Yan, and correct me if I'm wrong, you cannot speak to me right now. Ricky Lee Yan works at First Community Bank, which is your bank. He also is married to one of the Simmons, which, the mayor is married to one of the Simmons. This is too close to comfort. Could it be that now we're controlling the board? Next thing you know, we might as well bring in all the family in, that we really can control the board. Is it legal or illegal? That is my question. He needs to be removed immediately. Thank you very much.
Any others? That's all. All right, then I'm going to pass the gavel and I'm staying on the last two items, 14 and 15.
We move to item number 14, close the executive session. City attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712, that's a government code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to the Harlingen CISD's request for a specific use permit for a school in a residential, single-family R1 district located at the corner of Rio Honda Road and 21st Street, bearing a legal description of block 1, block 2, HCISD, Middle School Number 5, Division, Subdivision. Motion going into executive session.
Do we need to announce a good reason? And I'll make the motion that we move into executive session. Side.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. We're going to go into executive session, and we'll be going to the back room. We have one action item after we come out of executive session. Okay, we're out of executive session at 6:32. Going up to item number 15, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for a specific use permit to allow a school in a residential, single-family R1 district located at the corner of Rio Honda Road and 21st Street, bearing the legal description of block 1, block 2, HCISD, Middle School Number 5, subdivision, and authorize for any necessary interlocal agreements as a condition upon the specific use permit. The applicant being Harlingen HCISD.
Yes, Mayor, ten. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, care of Oscar Tapia, to allow a school of health professions in a single-family residential R1 district located at the corner of Rio Honda Road and 21st Street, bearing a legal description of block 1, block 2, HCISD, Middle School Number 5, subdivision, subject to, one, compliance with all pertinent city ordinances, codes, and standards; two, submitting an approval of a building permit application and building plans for an official plan review; three, providing and maintaining parking at a rate of one parking space for every three students, plus one parking space for each classroom, laboratory, or destruction area; four, approval of a landscape plan which includes 10% of the property landscape and a minimum of two-inch caliber trees at a rate of one tree for every 600 square feet of required landscaping; five, leaving the north access open to the public; six, subject to the interlocal agreement of the City of Harlingen and CISD agreed to an execution between both entities, and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the proposal.
Now, a motion.
I move that we approve a specific, specific use permit subject to the city and the school district entering into an interlocal agreement that would expand the east-west drive that's on the northwest side of the property to 37 feet back-to-back, with half of the additional cost to expand that drive to be paid for by the city. And also that the school district agree to keep the road open 24/7, that there's no closing of the road, and that they dedicate the right-of-way for the road, work that out with staff, dedicate the right-of-way to the road sometime prior to December 1st, or December 31st, 2014.
That's your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion's approved. That's it for our agenda. Thank you very much for everybody who's in attendance.